Too many decent or rough particularly.
I mean you had long.
And about it.
We didn't get anything on the other side.
Hmm? Came to my home. Have seen? The mics?
You all? And then it'll take a minute for fully read everything. I'm not the double check again. Yeah, just do it again.
Well, if they get it, yeah. Is it working? Well, that's really too bad. I mean, that whole presentation and no audio. Yeah. Well, we'll do it a couple minutes. So they have no video?
I'm. Busy. I'm gonna be happy. Okay. I believe the microphones are back on and we're ready to continue with our meeting. I've had a request from Councilwoman Powers who asked the city attorney of something.
Yes, could you please reiterate again for my information and other field information criteria for public comment?
Certainly. So the public comment portion of our agenda gives members of the public an opportunity to address the city council any item of interest that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. And so what that means, subject matter jurisdiction means an item that is within the control or under the jurisdiction of the city council. So for example, if, you know, somebody wanted to come up and talk to us about their opinion on the national election, that wouldn't be appropriate because as much as we might wish there's something we could do about it, there's not. But if there was concern about a city ordinance, something about the conduct of delivery of services by city employees, those would be perfect examples of items that would be within the subject matter jurisdiction or control of the council. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to have the city clerks read the official statement regarding public comments. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. Do we have any public speaker sheets at this time? Jean Davenport, would you like to come forward please? And state your name and address or where you live.
I live in Galt.
Not your address. What city you live in?
Jean Davenport, Galt, City of Galt. I'm here tonight to address the council as a whole about this. Since you want to keep it on agenda items, I'm gonna go through the four day week that the city represents the taxpayers of this city. It used to be five, now it's permanently four. You guys said that, you know, when you guys went into this break, it was gonna come back to five after we came out of recession. It's not happening. Since that representation and the representation of the taxpayers is lacking, I want to bring up the fact that, this is for everybody but Barbara, because I appreciate Barbara buying your stuff locally 100% of the time. It's really, I find it humorous and comical that you guys talk about how you want to beautify Galt, how Galt is this and that, you don't even buy your products in this town. You're running for city council, you guys buy your stuff in Sacramento or Stockton wherever. Let's go back two election cycles, because I was in the last election, and I spent half my money in this city. You can, are you kidding me, Mary Lou? Are you kidding me? You're gonna look at the lawyer to have me stop? You kidding me?
You're way out, you know, you're speaking on assumptions. You don't know.
Oh, no, it's not assumption, Mary Lou, because we had a conversation. We had a conversation. You're the one that verbalized it.
I did not verbalize.
Yes, you did.
You put things out of context and I did not verbalize.
No, I didn't.
And there is more than one printing shop here in the city of Galt. And if you're so concerned about keeping things in the city of Galt, why did you take your business to low die?
I didn't take my business to low die. I spent half my money at a union shop in Stockton and the other half right here. More than half of my money was spent at Galt sign. All I'm saying is you guys talk about this and then at the Heritage Festival, somebody overheard you talking about how you helped another candidate set up a fund to pay for for.
That is so not true.
Yeah, I'm just saying, somebody said.
Is this appropriate, Steve? I mean, really?
Yeah, Madam Vice Mayor, I just, you know, it's not an opportunity for dialogue. I really think that we ought to just let the speaker complete his testimony.
Thank you. So all I'm saying is if you guys talk about how you want, how this city is great, which it is, you should spend your money locally 100% of the time. At least half of your budget should be spent to help local businesses prosper. Because in this election cycle, there's only been one candidate that has spent money at the Galt sign. And where is the other printing shop? I don't even know what you're talking, I really don't know what the other shop is. So that's where I'm going with this. Barbara has spent 100% of her money here, 100% of it. As far as I know, that's what I was told. So I'm just going by what I was told.
Well, I don't have any records, but I do try to shop local. That's a big thing with me, as you know.
Well, the person I talked to said you spend all your money with your shop. So that being said, I just want to highlight it. And really, Mary Lou, I think you really need to grow a backbone on some of this stuff because you're really defensive and angry. Sorry.
Well, because you're kind of a jerk. Okay? Then, yeah, you are a jerk, okay.
Then can we move on? Yes. Would you read the calendar, please? Minutes of the regular meeting of September 20th, 2016, the City of Galt warrants and the Treasurers July 2016 monthly report and August 2016 monthly report. It's their motion to approve the continued.
Go ahead.
Did he say something? Back end. Okay. We have a motion, I believe, by Mayor Cruz from wherever he is, and a second by Councilwoman Hewer. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Okay, next we have Community Development Department. The subject is revision to Galt Municipal Code Chapter 15.24, additional requirements for issuance of building permits. And I think.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm going to take this item for a staff report. I'm sure there'll be a free lunch involved. What's presented for your consideration tonight is a change to Chapter 1524 of the Municipal Code, which deals with additional requirements for the issuance of building permits. And one of the particular sections that caused us to come forward this evening is in Section 020, completion of infrastructure, which in this provision dates back to 1988. The current language says that no building permit shall be issued for any structure until all public improvements have been completed to the satisfaction of the city council. And during my time here, I actually cannot think of a situation where we've actually completed public infrastructure, in particular on subdivisions, and before building permits were issued, we came back to the city council for approval of that public infrastructure. And so frankly, doesn't, the current section doesn't really match the actual practice in the, in the field. The other issue that came up is that there's a wide variety of the types of infrastructure that are completed on projects, and some of the items do impact health and safety, and others are a little bit more modest, such as, you know, putting in final landscaping. And there's times when we get requests from builders to move ahead with some level of construction, and the outstanding items might not be life or safety related items and might relate to things like landscaping. And staff wanted the opportunity to be able to exercise some degree of flexibility. So the change that's recommended for your consideration tonight is to modify that particular provision so that no building permit would be issued until public improvements have been completed to the satisfaction of the city engineer, unless at later times the completion of the improvements is allowed by ordinance law or approval of the city engineer. So it provides discretion to the engineer to deal with the actual situation in the field. There's some other minor cleanup provisions that have taken the opportunity. There's some other minor cleanup provisions that we've taken the opportunity to do at the same time, as far as changing the Galt Fire Protection District to Kusunis Fire District, or modifying our violation penalty provisions to be consistent with our more current ordinances on the book. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if Chris or Steve, if you had any additional comments to add.
Counsel?
Yeah, I had discussed this with the city manager several weeks ago, and I don't know whether this precipitated the change, but I'm in agreement with it. I mean, the issue that I spoke specifically with, with the city manager was, I actually dealt with a subdivider, ML Park Company, they've had extensive delays from AT&amp;T beyond their control, which prevents them from moving forward, and those are completion of public improvements. So, it seems unreasonable that the city would penalize the builder when it's beyond his control to complete the public improvements because an outside agency is not performing what they are contracted to do. So, I think that at least in those cases, and it is more appropriate to be vested with the city engineer. There shouldn't be a, you know, forum for, in front of the council, to take care of things that should be taken care of by staff. So, I agree 100% with the recommended changes.
Okay. I appreciate that. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this? The recommended action on this, would you read that, please, city clerk?
Introduce an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 15.24 of the Galt Municipal Code, code regarding additional requirements for issuance of building permits. Waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue to the next regular meeting for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The motion was made by Councilwoman Hewer, submitted by Councilman Campion. Go call vote, please. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item, lighting of the night parade. Armando Salley, Director of Parks and Recs.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Feel like one of Charlie's angels on the intercom there. For those of you old enough to remember that. So, tonight I'll be discussing the future of the lighting of the night parade. At the September 20th council meeting, council voted 5-0 to approve the new official city parade route. On that same day, staff received an email from the lighting of the night parade chairperson, Patrice Moreno, stating that she would no longer be coordinating the parade, and she will now give it to the city. So, the question is, is it the desire of council to continue with the annual parade or discontinue it? The total cost for the lighting of the night parade is estimated at $3,504 per staff time and a one-time cost of $3,025 for additional barricade signs for the new route. And the reasons we have to get the new barricades and signs is that we will no longer be doing rolling street closures. We'll actually put out barricades, close the streets, and then man it since it's a shorter route. So, these barricades, we will also use them for the Independence Day Celebration Parade and any future parade, so they won't just have a one-time use on, for the lighting of the night parade. Staff will attempt to absorb these costs in their current budgets, but may need to make an adjustment during the mid-year process. These were not anticipated costs. And in closing, staff is requesting the council to discuss and provide direction to staff regarding the future of the lighting of the night parade. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from the council? No. Any questions? Oh, go ahead.
I have a quick question regarding what the cost would be for the...
Well, we can't understand you, Mark, breaking up.
What did it cost last year?
What did we spend last year?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me. We, what we did is we asked to provide an estimate for this parade specifically. We did not compare it to last year's costs.
So, you're not putting us all costs worth?
These are all actual costs, what it will cost to have a parade. We did not go into comparing it to last year's parade route.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council?
Yeah, my only concern was the lighting of the night was scheduled this, the same time as which Chamber of Commerce food trucks. But just so, would you share with the council?
Sure. I reached out, I reached out to Ann Oldrick, the representative from the chamber for the food truck event, and we have a meeting set for Tuesday morning to discuss alternatives for their food truck location. We don't want to cancel it, we don't plan on canceling it, we just need to make some adjustments to the location, because now the parade route will go down Forest Street where they currently hold their event.
I'd really like to thank Ms. Moreno for 20 years of coordinating a very large parade, and that's a huge commitment, and I think we really should recognize her and thank her for her commitment to something for 20 years.
I agree, for 20 years, and she's built this up to a great event, and having it coincide with, and I forgot to mention this, I apologize, but if you do decide not to continue with the parade, we will still have our lighting of the night events with, which includes the band, the choirs, the tree lighting, and the pictures with Santa. We would still have those events. This event was just held by the Lighting of the Night Parade Committee, so...
So, do we have a new coordinator?
What we would do is we take it in-house. I've reached out to our Independence Day Celebration Parade Coordinator, Brenda Renfro, and she has accepted to take on this challenge, and I'm sure she's up to it, so...
I just think it could be a wonderful opportunity for the community to come out, interact, could make it, you know, as special as the Fourth of July, and I would really, I would hate to see us discontinue it. I think it's a really great chance for the community to come out and celebrate the holiday together, and so, I... I agree, and I think the new parade route is great. It's a lot shorter, so it gives people more time to all be together in one area, and the additional cost will be used for other parades, and they're gonna, it's gonna be used, it's gonna have to be bought for those parades also, like the Fourth of July. So, I think it would be a great event to locally have downtown, where everyone could kind of get together and mingle and hang out. It'll be actually kind of a good coincidence that the food trucks will be there, and it's really a great way for everyone to come out and celebrate the holiday, and set up a pop-up tent if it's raining, or [laughing], I mean, bring umbrellas, put on our warm clothes.
You'll be putting on your warm clothes anyway. Warm clothes is a must for that. I think anytime that we can find a way to work together, it usually turns out better in the end. So, moving the location of the Food Truck Mania, I think it's called, I think that would work good for everybody. Councilman Campion, did you want to say anything?
No, I think that we should go ahead and hold the parade with the new route. You know, hopefully it'll be attended as well as the old parade route, so...
Hopefully.
Okay.
I have faith in Brenda to continue it, yes.
She is fabulous.
She is, yes.
Yeah, and I agree, we need to thank our previous chairman, too, for 20 years of very hard work. Maybe the council would like to send her some kind of appreciation, or...
Or a recommendation, our next meeting.
Or something like that, that would be great.
A resolution, a request.
Right of revolution, thanking her. We should be the queen of the parade.
We do have someone from the audience that would like to speak on this subject, Sherri Daly, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Payne, councilmembers. Sherri Daly, I live in the City of Galt, and I've been walking a lot of precincts over on the east side, and the subject of the new parade route has come up a couple of times. And most people are happy with it and happy that the city is saving money on reducing the parade route and that their children won't be freezing to death, so they're mostly thankful. But some of the comments were that they feel a little excluded having it on the west side. So, I come to you with some ideas that might actually make people feel more included in the event. So, we were talking about maybe we could do something where we could have a contest with people's easy ups, so they come down and kind of stay for the parade, and maybe decorate them with lights and that sort of thing. And then perhaps, I know we work with smud a lot, we could get a load of snow brought down for the kids to play in, maybe on one of the properties that's down in the old town. And a couple of street vendors, people were kind of saying that a bunch of them, like the flea market, wouldn't be good, but a few of them, like some caramel corn, hot chocolate, that kind of thing. And the Boy Scouts, of course, have their tree lot right behind where the route is, so they always have some fun things going on for the kids there. And then I was thinking, too, the restaurants, if we could draw them in to do, you know, maybe a beer tasting with some spiced, Christmas spiced beer, and some wine tasting, and maybe some special dessert items that have to do with the Christmas sort of thing. And kind of make maybe a map where we could show people what you can actually come down. So, it'd create more like a community feeling where we could all get together, not just watch the parade, but shop and enjoy some time together. And then the most important thing I think we should do is bring back the bags of sand with the lights in them, because I remember that for years and years, everybody in town lining the streets with them, and I think it would just be a really unique thing that's special to people who have lived here a long time, to see that again. And since we have a short parade route now, we could actually maybe line the old town or the parade route with the old-fashioned bags with the sand and light in it. So, I just think we could have an opportunity to really make a neat holiday kind of experience, where we could all get together and do more than just watch a parade. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the recommendation is to provide direction to staff regarding the future of the lighting of the night parade. Do you feel like you've received enough direction, or do we need to make formal motions?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, I suggest a motion and direct staff to continue the operation of the lighting of the night parade.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Campion, a second by Councilwoman Powers. Offer the vote, please. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I say thanks for your efforts to Armando and for getting Brenda to come up to do it? It's a great idea.
Okay. Next item, updated agreement for disposal of household hazardous waste.
Madam Vice Chair and councilmembers, tonight we've got a new and improved agreement before you, and this is Ann Dennis, our analyst, and part-time solid waste coordinator for the city, among her many hats. We'll give you a brief presentation on a little bit of the history of the program and what we're recommending tonight.
Welcome, Ann.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight I bring before you an agenda item, adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an updated agreement with the City of Elk Grove. This agreement would allow for Galt residents to continue to utilize the Elk Grove Household Hazardous Waste Collection Facility for disposal of household hazardous waste.
We have a good relationship.
Historical background. To provide you with some historical background, the city contracted with Clean Harbors Environmental Services to provide annual household hazardous waste events from 2007 to 2013. Prior to that time period, the city contracted with MME Environmental Services from 1999 to 2007 for household hazardous waste events. Due to the Solid Waste Fund having financial challenges, the HHW events were discontinued in 2013. So, the household hazardous waste contracts have two current active contracts. One is with the City of Sacramento, and the other one is with the City of Elk Grove. And as you can see from this slide, it does seem to have a lot of text on there as I now look at it up here. Since the activation of the Elk Grove contract in October of 2014, costs through 2016 were For fiscal year 1516 alone, costs were $23,940. The HHW contract program has exceeded anyone's expectation of what Galt residents would utilize the Elk Grove disposal facility, and we are all pleased with the service provided to Galt residents, but to accommodate this usage, an increase to the contract limit is being recommended at this time. Before you tonight is this agenda report recommending an updated contract with the City of Elk Grove for an increased amount of $25,000 annually over a four-year period term ending June 30th, 2020. Additionally, staff is recommending that the city manager be authorized to approve future cost increases up to $40,000 annually, should user volumes warrant such, and should the Solid Waste Fund balance have the ability to sustain such a... allowable disposable items, and as you can see from this slide, many types of household hazardous waste are allowable for disposal through the Elk Grove Disposal Facility, which is located just off of Grantline Road. The non-allowable disposal items, and shows on this slide which items cannot be disposed of at that facility. The City of Galt has a website which has a link to the Elk Grove Special Waste Collection Center webpage, and it's from our Public Works Department homepage, and it provides their address, days and times of service collection, along with other useful information when pursuing their recycling webpage. So, the last slide is relative to costs and cost-saving ideas. Based on the fixed cost per year, I mean, per vehicle, my mistake, you can see it's $70 a vehicle. Some suggestions to help save the city on HHW costs are outlined on this slide. Homeowners can, or residents, can meet with their neighbors and plan trips semi-annually, quarterly, or even monthly, but hopefully go in one vehicle or downsize it from anybody who lives on their street to a couple, and take it as one shared drop-off. You can go through your garage and collect your items, kind of similar to a garage sale, but it's more like a disposal service. And hopefully, people in the community will get together and do that on their streets, and it gets rid of stuff that shouldn't be in their garage. I do want to note that there is a limit on the disposable items of up to 125 pounds without incurring extra costs. At this time, the $70 per vehicle cost is borne by the city on behalf of the residents. This concludes our presentation. Heather Neff, who is the Integrated Waste Manager from the City of Elk Grove, is in the audience this evening. Should you have any questions for her or for me? Following any questions, we recommend approval of this new contract.
Did she want to add anything to your presentation?
Do you have anything to add?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from council?
Ann, so irrespective of the amount, it's $70 per vehicle, if you have a pint of something...
That is correct. That is very correct.
And that's the way it's, the contract has always been?
Yes, and it's also that way with the City of, we also have a contract with the City of Sacramento, which I noted up here. I didn't go into detail with it simply because we're here to address Elk Grove, but they also charge $70 a vehicle, and the county does, too.
Up to 125 pounds?
Yes, that is correct.
Do they take tires? Do they take tires?
They do, and I will share with you what I think to be a very good item. The city of Elk Grove had a tire grant, and that tire grant expired, but I noticed that the city of Elk Grove, when they send me my quarterly billings, they don't charge us for the tires. And they have decided to bore the cost of us and their residents dropping off the tires. They do not charge us for that.
Wow, thank you. Yeah, because that is a problem, people just...
Yes, and that is, the reason they decided to keep it was because they wanted to make sure that people don't just start dumping them illegally. So they thought it was a good investment to continue that service, and they provide it to the city of Galt at no charge.
Well, I've utilized it a couple of times, and I think the service is always very...
They are very good over there.
Very good, they're great. They come right out and all handle very well, so I really appreciate that.
I think what I hear you saying, though, it would be nice if we could get together as neighbors and fill up our one car. Is that kind of where you were?
Well, the idea is to just do some...
Like a garage sale?
Cost-saving, yeah.
Not stop by with just one item?
No.
Yeah. And people probably don't realize that that's the way it's, you know, set up.
Or they probably just don't think to go talk to their neighbor about it either.
Okay. All right, so the recommendation here is to adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an updated agreement with the city of Elk Grove, where the city of Galt residents to continue to utilize Elk Grove Household Hazardous Waste Collection Facility for disposal of household hazardous waste items. Is there...
So moved.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, a second and a second.
Just one quick comment. So part of the recommendation from staff is that we authorize the city manager to negotiate the contract up to $40,000 per year for future years, correct? So this wouldn't come back to us unless you exceed the $40,000?
That is correct. If I do have that authority and if I implement that authority, I'll communicate to the council.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got that on record, too. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Would you, the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next item. Consideration of C Street, Central Galt Complete Streets Project funding and construction options. Bill Forrest, I believe, is going to take us through this one.
Yes, Vice Mayor Payne and council members, this next item is to sort of decide what our next steps are going to be with a very important project for the central Galt downtown area. And Mr. Bill Forrest will give you a presentation and talk with us about some of the challenges and options to move forward with this project.
All right.
Thank you, Steve. Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer, Public Works Department. I have been the project engineer, project manager of this project since its inception in 2011, and we're still not across the goal line. This is an exhibit that highlights all the infrastructure improvements that the city has done in the central Galt area in the last 20 years, the blue, which also includes the central Galt interchange and whatnot. The green areas were the C Street, Central Galt Complete Streets project as originally envisioned, and we had to modify it. And the initial concept behind the C Street, Central Galt Complete Streets project was to kind of culmination of all the projects that the city has done for improving the infrastructure in the central Galt area, as well as acting as an enhanced connector, transportation connector for pedestrian vehicle traffic, bicycle traffic from the, at the time, under construction, the central Galt interchange and the Old Town and the Old Town improvements that were completed in early 2000s. And as the project had moved along, 2012 was the best of times and the worst of times in that the project received a $2 million grant from SECOG to advance the project, and then in 2012, the state dissolved the redevelopment agencies, which was going to pay a good portion of the project as it was currently envisioned at the time, from the central Galt interchange all the way to Sixth Street and then Fourth Street improvements. This is just a brief slide showing a picture of the current conditions, that's C Street, that Lincoln Way, looking to the west, and then the lower picture is Fourth Street, kind of encompassing the railroad corridor. In the background, you can see our lovely security fence that was installed last year. This is some concepts that were envisioned and incorporated into the design for the C Street. It includes a large monument and a median right at the, if you will, the entrance at Lincoln Way and C Street, enhanced street lighting, and redoing the sidewalks and then narrowing the travelway a little bit to add planters or special pavement, special stamped concrete. And in those areas, we decided various facilities such as park benches, trash receptacles, bike This, with the dissolution of the RDA, the project was re-scoped to include C Street improvements from Lincoln Way to Sixth Street, tying into where the Old Town improvements currently in, and then Fourth Street, particularly on the west side of Fourth Street, all the way from B down to F. Along C Street, even though we're narrowing the, we are keeping the parallel parking that is in there, that the slide doesn't indicate that, but that is, we are keeping that. For the Fourth Street improvements, again, we had to, due to the loss of funding, we had to re-scope the improvements. The blocks that you kind of see highlighted in yellow are the open space areas. They're originally envisioned to have improvements, you know, park-like improvements, a parking lot, and that is a separate project now. And we've contracted with Calendar, who was the initial designer of these improvements, to do a remaster plan of the open space area, and that will be kicking off here in the very near future with some public outreach. And design concepts such as beautifying the fence have actually already been brought to the council's consideration. So along what's, what the Fourth Street improvements entail is returning diagonal parking to the west side. There's kind of a small plaza at the intersection with B Street. Between the project limits and C Street, the northerly project limits and C Street is addition of what I call a promenade walkway, about 25 feet and wider in some spots along the restored diagonal parking. South of C Street, all the way down to F Street, the walkway, not quite as expansive, but still expansive in terms of it's about 10 feet wide. Currently, there is no walkways on the west side, and there's only parallel parking along the west side. As mentioned, there'll also be similar Old Town street lighting for both the street as well as for the walkway, and then landscaping, irrigation, again, facilities, benches, trash Also involved will be enhanced crosswalk areas. There'll be bulbouts narrowing the road so that pedestrian has less of a pavement to travel, special stamping of the crosswalk, a more decorative look, and that's envisioned at B, not at C, at D. This exhibit shows on both sides that the E, but there's no walkway on the east side between E and F, so there's just going to be one crosswalk, and then we added a crosswalk down at F Street. So we advertised this project for construction in July. We received bids in late August, and our problem is that the received current bids exceed the project funding that has been budgeted. We looked at revenue options. We went and talked to the people who handled the Community Development Block Grant, whether we could get money, reallocate money from identified projects to this project. We went back to SECOG. We also talked to Caltrans about the possibility of additional funding, either from this existing source of the grant or other pots of money, and they all respectively declined, offering us money. As mentioned, this project has a $2 million grant. The rest of the money is allocated to come from the Measure A, and so the option there would be to increase the Measure A contribution to this project, which currently stands at about 1.2 million, which would, if we proceeded with the project as currently designed and went out the bid, it represents about a shortfall of three quarters to a million dollars that would have to be made up with Measure A contributions. And then we also looked at cost options. What can we do to reduce the cost of the project? One option would be to reject the current bids, redesign the project, and go out to rebid. With that, sometimes when you go out, reject bids and go out to rebids, you may anticipate some cost savings, but the general trend of cost of materials and labor has been going up. And in fact, we were warned that, from our designer, that they were starting to see an uptick in costs associated with other projects as they went out the bid. And so, and then the other option, cost option, is to negotiate with the apparent low bidder of the project to either reduce the scope of the project or identify any other potential cost savings, you know, material substitutions or whatnot. When we went out the bid, we had a base bid and two additive alternates. The additive alternates, the first one was the facilities, the benches, the trash receptacles, the bike racks. There's a seating associated with the little plaza area, so that was one additive alternate. The second additive alternate was monuments, the large, and there's actually also six small monuments, about four feet in height. So when you look at this table, which is also in your staff report, that's what we're saying. The base bid is everything but those two additive alternates. So option number one is to construct the project as currently out the bid and design, which is C Street from Six all the way to Lincoln and Fourth to a point a little south of A Street, all the way down to F. And the table highlights where the shortfall is, the amount of the shortfall associated with either going with the base bid or the, if you choose to add the additive alternates. Flipping back, alternative two is only doing Fourth Street improvements at this time, not doing anything associated with C Street. There is a project in the works looking to enhance Lincoln Way, and there's a possibility of maybe adding the C Street improvements to that Lincoln Way project at a later time and have that as a more complete project. Third option is to do C and Fourth Streets, but on Fourth Street, eliminate the improvements north of B to the project, the northerly project limits, and then not to do the improvements from E down to F. And then the last option, the fourth option, is to do C and Fourth Streets, but not to do the landscape plantings and, or to delay, associated with another project, a later phase, to do all the hardscape aspects, the walkways, the curb, the parking, and the landscape irrigation, and not to do the tree plantings and not to do the streetlights. But we would put in all the underground infrastructure necessary for those to be done at a later time.
So you wouldn't be tearing up streets and sidewalks that you had just put in?
Correct.
Okay.
The maintenance of the landscape plantings is currently included in the current bid for a one-year period, but the issue of long-term operation and maintenance of these added facilities has become an increasing concern. And for that further discussion, those policy implementations, I'm going to turn it back over to Steve.
Thank you, Bill, and as we kind of approach a discussion of where do we go from here, Bill has outlined some fundamental options that are available. There are other variations on the theme, example 3B, that we do some of the enhanced improvements, some of the monumentation, and remove some of the vegetation. This map is up to show you where we have lighting and landscape districts in the city, and the two little orange blobs in central Galt where there are no colors show where this project lies or the full scope of the proposed project. And we're not in a lighting and landscape district, so it kind of comes down to is the city willing to, in perpetuity, fund maintenance of landscape facilities without any property owner or adjacent business participation in that ongoing operation and maintenance. If this was new development, they'd be required to form or annex to a district and pay their fair share. And this, we're anticipating that probably once these improvements are up and running, that between the lights and the landscaping, which is lighting and landscape district, typical work product and pay-per-service, would be probably about $15,000 a year of ongoing maintenance costs that, absent some form... of ongoing maintenance costs that, absent some form of a district to provide support, would be an additional burden on the general fund. So, we had, in our staff report, as we were writing it, recommended that we proceed now with the Four Street corridor as a complete project. As we look at this, we feel that, at this time, I would modify that slightly, recommendation slightly, and suggest that we put in the underground, put in the electrical conduits and the pole boxes, but not put in the lighting or the landscaping with the current phase, but set aside some of the current funding and then attempt to work with the property owners on either annexation to a district or even having some preliminary talk amongst staff with property owners as to might there be support for a business improvement district or something to that effect to assist with downtown enhancements? And that could also be something that could do limited lighting and landscaping type work products, depending on what comes out of those conversations. So, we're basically at the point where we're going to turn to council and say, well, we presented a couple of different options for, either we pull money. What we didn't really talk about is, well, what about additional Measure A? Well, all of our current allocated Measure A funds are, that are anticipated to be available over the next couple of years, have been allocated in our CIP to other capital improvement projects, such as the Lincoln Way improvements that were mentioned, as well as a Safe Routes to School project and a bicycle and pedestrian project. Those last two projects have over two million dollars worth of also approved grants for which we need the Measure A to match. So if we were to say, well, let's take the money and finish the C Street and Four Street project, then we're possibly jeopardizing an additional three million dollars in grants to those other projects. So it's sort of, you know, gladly pay you tomorrow for a hamburger today. And then tomorrow comes and we're not sure what we're going to do. So our recommendation is, you know, in saying that we weren't unsuccessful in our conversations with, you know, CDBG grant folks and with Secod, I think both agencies indicated a willingness to have a conversation about advancing future year funding. But that essentially becomes a loan and again takes away from those future projects. So, the only other sort of potential for supplemental funding that comes into the mix would be, be interesting to see in a few short weeks what the voters decide to do with Measure B. And that could have a dramatic impact on our ability to not so much fund capital projects, but reduce our reliance on Measure A for normal routine repairs and maintenance in town. So, with that, we are looking for direction. A, do you concur with Four Street as our first phase at this time and do as much of the project as we can with or without landscape and street lighting? I would encourage that perhaps we hold on the lighting landscaping, put in all the underground stub outs to make that an easy project in the future and then have continued dialogue with the business owners as to their interest and willingness to sort of get some skin in the game, so to speak. And then lastly, do we reject bids and go back out with a re-scope project? Or do we negotiate? I think we could probably have our cake and eat it too there. And the, we could negotiate. And if we're unable to come to successful terms, we can then recommend rejection of the bids and proceed from there. So, we're at your disposal and direction tonight as to how you'd like to proceed or answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I think you're saying we have to make the hard decisions.
We're reaching that point. We do have some time constraints on our grant funding eligibility. We have applied for an extension. That extension hasn't been formally approved. Staff are willing to support a short-term extension of practically ninety days to give us a little bit of time if we need to do a rebid. But we don't think they're going to give us another year to form districts and do those types of things.
Okay, council, I'm sure you have comments or questions regarding the choices we have before us.
On the, I guess, I have a misunderstanding of what the project was. I had assumed that the parking lot on Four Street was included in the Four Street improvements. And according to these reports, that's not the case, is that correct?
That's correct, primarily related to the funding source of the grant, which is for transportation-related. And they sort of draw a line between off-site parking, although a park-and-ride would normally be something that could be eligible, but since this isn't formally designated as a park-and-ride site, we don't currently feel that that would be eligible for grant funding. But we are planning, as part of, as Mr. Forrest mentioned, a separate CDBG-funded project that would begin to address the open space and phases. We currently are getting about, how much a year? Hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. It would probably take a couple of years' worth of funding to allow us to move forward with the parking lot phase. And perhaps we could do a gravel lot and then as a subsequent phase, come in and pave that as funding became available. We're also looking to do some rudimentary beautification, broadly received direction to see what we can do with the fence that was installed as part of the quiet zone. And so those are sort of a separate project that would marry up with the Four Street frontage improvements.
I, you know, and I don't know that I'm ready to make a final decision tonight, but I would like to know a little bit more about what the options are for advanced funding, particularly if CDBG, if we can get advanced funding in CDBG for the parking lot, because I think the parking lot is integral to any large venue that goes on down there. If you've been down to the truck events, everybody's parked in that dirt parking lot. And, I mean, any large event, that's where everybody's parked. And I would think that by, you know, undertaking the improvements along Four Street, you're going to want to look at what the elevations are on that parking lot to ensure that for future grading. So I, I think, to me, it kind of goes part and parcel. I don't know whether we can possibly get the advanced funding or not. I think, I know that we have Measure A funds programmed at least for the next, what, two years in the existing budget? Or are you talking past two years?
Our CIP actually looks out five years and we've got some year two and three projects that are needing, that are currently available funding.
And they are all dependent upon or involve grant funds that require match?
I wouldn't say all, but the two flagship projects or the large projects that are in there have three million dollars' worth of grant funding in play based on our city willingness to match funding.
And I'd like to, you know, have a little bit more information on those, you know, dates, times, and then, you know, okay, when would money be available in order to, if we wanted to see if STA would be willing to advance funds? I don't know. So, I mean, those are the sort of things that, you know, at least, I think it's important we have the parking lot. I would be inclined at this point to reduce the improvements along Four Street in order to save some money. I don't think we necessarily have to go from B Street all the way up to A. And I think you could stop it at E Street instead of going all the way to F, because the majority of activity is between B and E. I mean, that's kind of the core right now. You could get residents at the end and, you know, uses that aren't really integrated into the downtown area. So I think that's an option that I think I would be willing to look at in terms of cost savings to put back into the project, in particular, the parking lot. I mean, I feel real strongly about getting some parking down there because there isn't any.
Would you, would the council like to hear comments from the audience before we proceed with our comments?
Sure.
Sean Farrell? Farmer, sorry.
Yeah, and as he's coming up, maybe to one of the points that you made, Councilman Campion, is, the diagonal parking would certainly add a significant additional amount of parking as an interim step.
Right.
And we could work on advanced funding of the CDBG program, which is the funding source for that project. And they've indicated a willingness to have that conversation to sort of speed up the parking lot phase. Probably the curb and gutter is providing the road drainage. And that would actually set sort of the benchmark for how we would need to grade the parking lot to tie that in.
Right.
Got a little bit of the chicken or the egg there, but we would like to see the road improvements, set the grades, and then we can...
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Sean, since I didn't get your name right, would you repeat your name and if you live within the city?
Yeah, my name is Sean Farmer and I lived in the city limits. And I'm speaking as a representative of building owner in that area. A family owns a large section of that that would be impacted by that. So, we had a meeting with Chris Sorias and some other of you that are here this morning. And we've kind of opened the dialogue on the interest of the building owners willing to, you know, create some kind of district to contribute funds. And so that's something that we've decided to push off to another meeting so we can get more building owners that are in that area that weren't present today to see what the interest is in that. But aside from that, and that's on the table, so I just want to put my two cents in on the process of bidding. So I'm in sort of the construction business where I, you know, we bid on things and stuff like that. I know historically, just because you have three bids that come in, low, high, you know, low, medium, high, doesn't mean that that's it. I think if time allows for it, to go back and say, can you do better? I mean, all they can do is say no. I mean, if they can, if they come back and say, yeah, we could probably whatever, I mean, it's called negotiation. I think before we just say, this is all we have, let's just try to figure out where else to get the money, I think we should, you know, push really hard to do that. Second of all, I think if you do part of the project, and again, I'm not claiming to be some kind of engineering expert, but I feel like if you do that and then you don't do the landscape, landscaping is such a beautiful part of it. I mean, it just kind of really just kind of gives it that pop, you know? If you just do the sidewalks and do the parking, that's, you know, like Councilman Campion said, you do need the parking, that is a very critical piece of it. But without the landscaping, it just kind of doesn't have that factor that we really want. And so, I mean, I think before you just say, let's do the parking and get rid of the landscaping, maybe you can just kind of like downsize the, or downscale some of the, you know, the design, maybe make it not as fancy in certain aspects in order to get some landscaping done. I also say, as he was stating, that costs have gone up. Well, if you do part of it now and then you say, well, let's just do some of that later when we have the money, well, later it's going to cost more. So I think, you know, if you have the opportunity to get it done and get a cost locked in, that's going to be smarter than trying to push off later. And we definitely don't want to just assume that if we do form some kind of business district where business owners are going to contribute, that that's going to pay for something like that. You have to remember that there's really not, we're talking about businesses and landowners, it's different, but with just landowners, you're only talking probably about five or six landowners in that whole area. And we can't bear the whole brand of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in landscaping or, you know, however much it is. So just want to keep that in mind, you know, contributing is one thing. But I just, I hate to see you do a project and it just be like half-done and it just stays that way for ten more years because there's no money. So, anyway, that's my opinion. I just wanted to, you know, put my two cents on that. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Campion. I can add to what Mr. Farmer stated, just he talked about a meeting that happened this morning. That meeting for the whole council was kind of a recap of our Tracy tour that we took of the Tracy downtown. And it was the group that, you know, went on the bus to, you know, discuss kind of the future of the downtown. Councilmen with Hugh and Councilman Campion were in that meeting during that discussion. And we did talk about a lot of different things, including the formation of a property-based improvement district as a mechanism to finance and fund, you know, either downtown continuing maintenance, such as landscaping, you know, streetscapes, funding that could possibly go towards doing events in the downtown area, you know, marketing-type, you know, brochures, you know, that type of thing. So, there's a continuing discussion and we'll be having a future meeting with the property owners down there.
So, we were thinking that if we had a business district down there, we were looking at more for their help as far as maintenance in lieu of a landscaping and lighting district that we have in residential areas? I was trying to see what part...
That's one option, that's one option. But they're, you know, and really, it's kind of up to the property owners to make a determination as to what is a priority, whether it's, you know, the marketing materials or, you know, you know, like in Tracy, they provide and hire for assistance to run the district. I mean, that's a much, much bigger deal, but it's really up to them. But one of them could be maintenance in general, so that's just one of the options.
I guess the point that Mr. Winkler was, you know, making earlier, you know, is typical when you have residential development or other development, you have either property owners work with the city and they pay into, you know, a maintenance district so we can maintain landscape and the lighting. That is a benefit to those properties. Property-based improvement is one tool, you know, but here the city, we're talking about two million dollars that's going to go into, you know, downtown improvements and streetscape improvements that's going to benefit businesses downtown, it's going to benefit properties downtown. And what skin in the game do they have in helping us, you know, in the future in maintaining, you know, that streetscape and the lighting? And, you know, those are discussions and a lot of communities have those discussions, you know, with downtown because, you know, the historic old towns don't have those mechanisms in place. And as you evolve, you know, that's one of the steps that, you know, cities trying to partner with, you know, the property owners to do is look at those future maintenance needs.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, Councilman, excuse me, Fiore, did you have any comment?
And looking at the Four Street improvements, so I might understand that the parking lot was going to be between C and D? That that was where the parking lot was?
That's correct.
Laid it to go?
Because...
Did it enter off of C Street, is that what?
Entrance is actually off of Four Street.
Actually off of Four Street, okay.
Because you have the rail crossing in proximity. C and Fourth is a C Street. One thing I would like to mention is that this project as designed takes into account these future phases of the parking lot and the open space improvements. So, for example, the irrigation connection is sized to eventually irrigate that entire open space area. There'll be a pad for a pump, a pump for the irrigation system. For what we're doing now, we don't need the pump. But we're actually having the electrical and the, if you will, plumbing designed to accommodate these future phases and improvements. Storm drainage, for example, part of this project will be a stub to the future parking lot. So, that will be accommodated for. One of the things that will be coming up is a remaster plan of the, of the open space, including the parking lot. Because when we did the initial outreach in 2011, just to give you an indication, the cost, the estimated cost of the parking lot as master plan and envisioned and presented to the public was going to cost a little shy of a million dollars. And then as Mr. Winkler mentioned, our colors of money, our pots of money paid for transportation improvements, which did not include. And so, part of this remaster plan effort is, okay, what can we build that, you know, can accommodate even a future phase? You know, there's talk of, you know, a gravel parking lot, for example, living with that in an interim basis. The other point to raise is for the option where we're not going to do the landscaping and the street lighting, the plan is to put bark. And so, it won't be bare dirt and, you know, messed up dirt in this little planter. You know, we'll make it attractive as we can without planting the plants. So, that's one aspect.
Okay, so we did receive six bids, correct?
Yes.
Let's do six bids. Okay, so, if we, you know, if we, Councilman Campion's suggestion that we scale it back to between B and E Street, I'm just concerned that we still need the walkway. I mean, I, you know, I walk down there. You really need to be able to connect to, to the streets, I mean, and get off. But I, but I share your concern. I mean, I just, you know, I just know right now, there's no sidewalks. And so you're just out walking in the dirt and...
Or in the street. Or in the street.
Or you'd have to walk on the, does the east side have sidewalk out of the...
Yeah, it does.
It does, down to E Street and then on the east side. There, I think there is a section of sidewalk closer to F, but I think you kind of lose it as you go north.
And I could see not landscaping it. I mean, it obviously, you know, would make sense not to landscape it, but I am a little concerned about walkways and stuff. Just because I think that if you don't wa, if we don't look at doing walkways now, it's going to be piecemeal later on to try to do it. But I am really concerned, I share your same concern because every event down there, if we, if we can escape that and take away that, then there's going to be, and even though we'll have some parking with the diagonal, there's, it's not going to be adequate. I mean, it's not going to be enough without the parking garage.
Well, especially if you close off the streets.
Yeah.
And that's what the venue is taking place, usually. And that's what the venue is taking place, usually.
That's true.
Councilwoman Powers, did you weigh in on this?
No. My head is spinning.
Um, did I understand though that some of our funding has a time limit? We've asked for an extension, but we don't know about an extension?
Whether it be CDBG on the open space grants that we're pursuing, a multi-year funding on, the current grants of $2 million that are, that are federal grants through CACOG and Caltrans, those have time limits for delivery. Almost all of our current grant cycles that are available, they're looking for projects that if we, if we earmark the money for you, then they want to see delivery because they're, we're competing with other agencies-
Exactly, yeah.
...who have projects that are ready.
I know that's true.
And so we, as your Public Works Director, I think we'd be remiss to, to lose other grants, you know, if we have the ability to move all the projects forward in a reasonable timeframe.
Seems like we've had more discussion tonight on Fourth Street as opposed to, what's it, Lincoln Way?
C.
C and Lincoln Way.
A little, yeah. I would think Fourth Street to me feels like the priority.
That's what I was trying to find out. Do, do we feel like that-
I like how I feel.
Does the council have any feelings about whether we should try to put our eggs in the basket down on Fourth Street?
Well, I think that's where we're really trying to revitalize. I do have some opinions, I guess. And I do agree with what Mr. Farmer said regarding that we need a little bit of shrubbery and stuff down there. And the parking lot, as you said, is very important. And, you know, hopefully, some of the businesses down there will take the initiative. I mean, we're doing a lot of work to bring stuff down there, so one would help, hope that they would want to get together and work on, you know, improving the area down there also.
Was one of our options just focusing on, on Fourth Street? And how did the funding look for that project to do it in fourth?
That's essentially option two, as you look at your chart.
Yeah, I see it.
And that is, of all the options shown, the one that basically lets us break even, provided that we eliminate in its entirety the phase for C Street and bring that back at a later time.
Did that include a parking lot?
No, that, again, the open space is a separate project, so we're talking about the project that we bid, which is the frontage improvements on the west side of Fourth Street.
We're just talking about this, this-
We are, we, we-
Sidewalks and-
I am resonating with the comments previously made that, that we do, we've had some preliminary dialogue with the county community grant folks, and they have expressed an openness to advance funding, you know, we can accelerate the project, we would need to formally request that, and then they would formally consider that as part of a funding cycle, but-
And that would include-
They have, they have a timeline for countywide delivery of the funding expenditure, they lose funds with federal government. So they're interested in, they've got some other projects that are facing similar dilemmas throughout the county, they're looking actually to move-
So that would include the parking lot?
That project is envisioned to complete the parking lot, yes.
Seems like we're getting somewhere here, so-
The parking lot is a separate project.
Right.
Separate funding. Completely separate from what we're talking about today.
From the item that we're discussing tonight, but-
But we might be able to bring it, yeah, bring it in with this.
In, in looking at the report, and I know that you, the staff has, you know, worked on this project probably since 2011, 2012, we have, it says, 1.2 million has been allocated from Measure A. Is that funds that are still available or funds that have been spent and there's a balance, or what?
That is what is budgeted for this project in our CIP in the current two-year funding cycle.
And, and so have we drawn down on the $2 million in the grant?
Well, that, it's construction funding, so that, we need our 1.2 to put with the $2 million grant to get to the 3.2, 3.4 million dollar range.
Because the $2 million grant does have a local match component too. And then, so there's a portion that, of Measure A, that's for the construction, and then there's, as it's a federal grant, there's mandated support services, construction management and construction assistance, and we entered into a contract with those back in April, I believe, of this year. And so that takes the rest of the Measure, Measure A money that's been allocated for the construction of this project.
Because I just look at here, we have $2 million, 2, 3.2 million dollars, but the base bid plus add alternates comes up to under number two, is 2.7 million. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out, is there then excess revenue or no?
There really isn't. What you're not seeing are the construction management costs-
Okay.
...and the previously sunk costs, so.
So we don't, so this, the 2.7 doesn't include what we've already expended in terms of design?
Or will expend for construction management, which is separately encumbered.
Okay.
If we scale back the landscaping, I mean, I, particularly if we don't have a way in which we're going to maintain the landscaping, it does concern me that we put in a lot of landscaping and then we now have this huge additional cost in maintaining it. But I really wouldn't want to see us not do the lighting, because I think that's one of the issues down there. I mean, if you're down there at night, it's dark. You know, I hate to see us put in the sidewalks and do, not do the lighting, even though I could then be tapping off of the landscaping until we figure out how, you know, how we're going to fund it. But I do think we need some trees down there, we, we need really-
And we did any, any acceptable trees from the tree foundation or-
We can, generally, the answer historically has been yes, we've been able to get donations from tree foundations, or if we just did a limited number of trees, those don't require a lot of maintenance, but they would require irrigation, so you start to-
But we've talked about putting in-
...how much you have to do.
Irrigation anyway, prepping for future landscaping.
Right, our plan would be to put in dry piping stub outs, not have any active irrigation.
Possibly some trees that are like drought tolerant type of trees, maybe some more palm trees.
Well, the, the design actually does include the addition of, I believe it's five more palm trees. We're, we're saving the ones that are there in the park. The ones that are closest to the current curb line will be incorporated into planters between the diagonal spacing. Then north of B Street, we're going to continue the theme of placing five more palm trees in planters. The master plan for that open space shows a second row marrying up with the second row of palms that are currently in the park, but that's not part of this project, just the five that are close to the street within the landscape planters.
I mean, I know they're not native, because we had talked about trying to head more toward drought tolerant, native kind of planting so that we, you know, we're not using as much water and not requiring the amount of irrigation.
I, I'll have to check with the landscape architect, I'm, I'm not sure on that.
Palm trees are about as drought tolerant as you get, but they're not native.
They're not native.
Yeah.
Well, they're native to us down there. Okay, so is the lighting included in this option two?
Yes.
Okay.
It's included in the plus base bid, plus alternatives is where the lighting is.
It's in the 2.7 million?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have money for that?
Let me just clarify, along Fourth Street-
Yes, uh-huh, that's what I'm talking about. We're, I think we're focusing on Fourth.
If, if we remove C Street, we have enough funding to do the add alternates along Fourth Street.
Uh-oh.
Well, do we seem to have a consensus that we kind of agree that-
Uh, we're getting, we're getting the big guy up here.
He's my boss.
Yeah, that's what I said, the big guy's coming up.
Mayor and Council, we have 2.7 million dollars left for construction, that's what we have remaining for this project, unless we do some addition to it. But all the encumbered for the ACM and all the design and, and the, and the support during construction, that's already been taken care of. We have 2.7 million right now.
Working.
That's for construction. That's, that's 2 million plus 700,000 from the Measure A. So when you're looking at item number two or, or option number two, it includes everything, landscaping, lights, stamped concrete, everything that was, it, it gives you a complete street, basically, almost from A all the way over to F. Gives you bulb outs, gives you a complete street.
Except the, the parking lot.
Parking lot was not a part of this project.
Okay.
But anything is possible when you negotiate with a contractor.
Oh, right, I like that, yeah.
Okay? Whether we get a chip seal parking lot or something. We are looking at grading it as part of this project to grade it, make sure we have the right grades.
Okay.
And so you're talking a little bit more money in there and you can have something that can work for a while. I only just don't talk about wastewater, I will talk about other-
Great, okay.
Grading of the parking lot is not included in this project.
But we're looking at a possible way of bringing that parking lot in from another source.
Or, or advancing the other project.
That's it, that was the one, yeah, okay.
And like it's, like I said, we currently have a contract with Calendar and Associates to remaster plan the parking lot as well as the open space. More than likely, given the amount of funds, the parking lot will be something barely paved, maybe, I can't say at this time. And, and the open space improvements more than likely will involve beautification of the, of the fence along the railroad tracks.
May I ask a question?
You are the city manager, you certainly may.
It, just the, the cost of the landscaping along, you know, that whole corridor, you know, if the council were to, you know, remove that, and then can that landscape, can that, those dollars go towards the parking lot? Or, you know, start those improvements?
We'd have to look at the, the term used earlier was flavor of money.
Yeah.
I, I don't believe that the, the CACOG grant would allow that, and typically Measure A is, is restricted to transportation uses. But I think it would be viable to, it'll probably take, to get a completed project on the open space, it'd take three years worth of CDBG funding to get at least a, a hard-surfaced parking lot and, and some very novel improvements, dense beautification as an example. And I think that they would be willing to consider that, that'd be about $450,000. And we conceivably could, could advance that project as soon as next spring, which would really be coincidental if, if, if CACOG had approved that, I'm sorry, if CDBG, County, State, HIRA, whatever that stands for.
Sacramento-
Sacramento County Housing and Rehabilitation Agency, they would, they might have to take that to their board, and if so, then that's a little longer process if they have the administrative ability to, to advance forward alone, that that could potentially speed things up.
Okay. I wish Councilwoman Campion was back in here. I'd like to see if we have reached a consensus among the councils to focus on Fourth Street and, um, put C Street off to a future date. We've had more discussion on that, but I'd like to know what, what you think.
Does Mayor Cruz have any comments?
Yeah, Mark, are you there?
Well, I'm here.
Do you want to add?
The gladdest he's ever been.
Well, I, I had a couple of questions with the CDBG fund.
Shoot, go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, I, I couldn't tell you, I heard a lot of people in the background, I didn't know if I was getting through or not. You're saying that, you're going to say that we cannot use it for parking, is that correct?
Uh, Councilmember Cruz, what I'm suggesting is I think we would need to talk to the funding agencies and make sure that that is a, an approved use of this grant funding, and we'd want to revisit our Measure A tenants and make sure we're able to make a finding.
Well, I, I kind of, I, I like the old idea of sweet talking the developer to do the best we can, because those business people down there have been dealing with it much higher up there forever, and they're, they're about set up with it.
I, I think we've heard that, I think we've all heard that from them. So, anything else, Mayor Cruz?
I'm good, I'm, I'm for option two, as long as we get everything completed that we're supposed to.
Okay, I would agree.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I have a motion, yes.
Is there?
I have a motion, yes. That we go with option two? Is that your motion to go with option two?
Option two, correct.
Is there a second, please?
Second question.
Okay, we have a question from-
Is, are we, are we not considering the parking lot at this time then?
I think we could, if we wanted to, I was just taking it one step at a time. Because I think the parking lot was going to be coming from another source of money, and then I'm not sure if they have the answer tonight, but if we could just get one part of this done, that would be-
Well, this evening, you know, we're looking for direction, and then we'll bring this back to the city council at the next meeting, and what would the actions be at the next meeting?
Yeah, depending on the direction we get, we might need to, we need to negotiate with the contract, we need a little time to do that, it'll probably be two meetings out.
Yeah, okay, so we, we have a motion to go-
To direct staff to bring back to us regarding option two, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And is that with full landscaping or with limited or no landscaping?
I'd like to see full landsc, I'd like to be myself, I don't know.
I think that's kind of where we are.
But I'd also like to see the parking lot issue brought back to us about what it looks like our options could be with the parking lot, I don't know, I'd like to hear more about the parking lot. If we took away landscaping, could we do more of a parking lot? If we, you know, kind of those kind of options? I mean, I'd like to see it all then, but, but I really think we need some sort of parking situation.
I agree. I don't disagree with you, I'm just looking at the timeframe that we have. We're in jeopardy of losing money, because I do know that these agencies-
Ask your question.
If you don't use the money, they ask if someone else is ready to use it, can use it, no.
Are we in jeopardy of losing, are we in jeopardy of losing the funds, and if so, what is the drop dead date?
The current drop dead date is we had, we had until November to award the project.
We have awarded-
Requested a time extension.
Okay.
And staff are going to favorably recommend that, but they need to go to the board and, and make that finding. We are not likely to get a year, but they have indicated that we could probably get, you know, 90 days, maybe 120 days, if we need time to rebid the project, as an example.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor that we need to vote on. Going to ask Councilwoman, you are to repeat the motion.
Well, Mark made the motion.
I know that you helped.
Okay, anyway.
Well, I, I need to clarify something here.
Go ahead, Mark's talking.
Northerly valid point. The way I just understood, said that 2.7 million dollars covers everything on Fourth Street with the system of the parking lot, is that not correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that is what my motion is.
Okay. And do you still have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to go with option two.
Well, first, but Mark, it's just for staff to bring back a report-
Right.
...regarding option two.
Right, we can't.
Correct? I mean, we're not actually doing, saying we're going straight forward with option two, it was direct staff to bring back a report to us regarding option two, correct?
That's correct, because-
That's what I'm seconding.
Okay.
Anything to negotiate.
I think we're clear now on the motion and the second, so I'll call for the vote, please, roll call vote. This is giving direction. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay, you have that direction. Do you, I have to ask this, Councilman Campion, do you want to try to pursue a direction on the parking lot at this time?
Yeah, I would request the council support, directing staff to evaluate our options for funding the post-parking lot, adjacent Fourth Street, and if necessary, look at cost savings as part of the option two in order to see that it is, that we can get some, some level of parking, in addition to looking at advanced funding for CDBG.
And is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second? We have a second. Any more discussion on this? Is it kind of clear to staff, the direction that we're voting on?
That's correct and I think implicit, but I'll ask the question just to clarify that our intent would be to then negotiate with the low bidder to see what we can bring back to you.
Sounds good. Okay, so I'll call for the roll call vote, please. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion, direction, motion to direct passes unanimously. Thank you so much for all your help through that.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Council or City Clerk, please.
Adoption of a new comprehensive citywide records retention schedule and records management manual and repealing resolution number 2050.
And I believe you have that item too.
Over the last year, the City Clerk's office has recrafted the outdated document to provide a more comprehensive retention schedule. And for people in the audience that are still here, the retention schedule is intended to direct staff on how long to hold city records and when and how to dispose of records after they have exceeded their life cycle. Retention periods are based upon federal, state, and local laws, business needs, and general knowledge as to how long records should be kept. And new for the City of Galt is the Records Management Manual, which provides principles and procedures on records management. For example, it includes the definition of an official city record, includes management of email documents, public records requests, and records destruction procedures. I'd like to go to the second page of the agenda report, which shows you kind of what the new records retention schedule will look like. I also wanted to let you know that each department has evaluated the particular area of responsibility and has provided any department preferences outside of a minimum record retention, which is, was reviewed by the city attorney.
That's good to know.
Good job.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah, does she have any questions?
Nope.
Councilwoman Hewer?
Nope.
This end of the table, any questions?
Any questions?
Happens when you go last.
Okay, the recommendation is to approve a resolution adopting a new City of Galt comprehensive citywide records retention schedule and records management manual. Is there a motion?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second?
Thank you.
Is there any?
Campion and Cruz.
Mayor Cruz? Is there any other discussion or questions on this item?
No.
If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are now down to comments by staff. Steve? I'll start with you, sir.
I don't have any great astounding information to offer. We're seeing continued subdivision activity in both, in Emerald Park, Mr. Ettrich's community is moving forward with several houses and had a lot of work going on down off Cost and Lincoln nearing completion on the Creekside unit, Parker Creek. And of late, a lot of dirt work going on down near the golf course, south of Simmerhorn and east of Crystal. And that's for a new approximately 150 lot senior complex. So they're trying to get the work done, the grading work done before winter and we've yet to actually see the final improvement plans, but that'll be, I think they're hoping to get through plan check during the winter and be ready to go back at it in the spring.
Do they have any Swenson Hawk issues on that, on that project?
They're in the process of mitigating that now. We think we have that resolved.
I think this is the season that we need to worry about.
The nesting season is over. I think they're on their way back to Argentina or wherever it is they go. So I think we're.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
I think we're okay. You know, they, they actually did have a nesting bird on the site and they had to wait for that guy to flee the nest before they could start to grow.
I know how that goes, I've been there. Anything else, Chris? That was interesting.
Well, Steve stole a little bit of my thunder.
I was going to give you a development update.
He didn't talk about Elliott Homes. They've pulled 71 permits in their Phase B section of River Oaks III. So that leaves about 50 lots remaining in that, in that part of the subdivision. They're already started talking to us about going final on the last phase of River Oaks III, and that contains a little over 70 units. And really, that would be it for Elliott. They'd be, they'll be built out of their property once they complete that. KB Homes, as Steve mentioned, has 14 homes under construction with, you know, they're going to do about seven more real soon. Their goal really was to keep their guys moving. As they built out Creekside Four across the street, across Cost, it was important for them to kind of keep their guys working because if they flee, or they fled KB, they would be tough to get back. So we worked with KB to kind of keep those guys busy and let them go across the street. And as you mentioned, Dry Creek Oaks is grading, and I think Steve gave you an update on that. For commercial, you've probably seen Taco Bell and Squeeze-In going vertical over a trillion corners. And over at Galt Village Center, we do have the Starbucks building shelf permit ready to go, but we still haven't gotten the ARCO and the site permit yet. So we've got a building permit ready to go, but no site to put it on. And our goal is to keep our new building official really busy.
He's smiling now. Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Emily, do we still have any money? You're going to have to say something.
Good evening. Yes, we do still have money, but not quite enough to finish that project you were just talking about. That's all I have, thank you.
Chief?
Nothing to report from the police department.
Okay, city manager?
I knew you wanted to, just give you a quick update. I handed the council a letter that staff will be sending out to the different organizations in the community. It's in partnership with Officer Chow and Dr. Kaufman to get support and send letters for, to the Delta College Board of Directors in their location of San Joaquin Delta College North Campus. And so if you, I'll email that to the council as well, so if you know people or organizations out there that can provide us letters of support, please send that.
We need to work on that. Thank you. City Attorney? Ladies first, Paula?
Thank you.
Okay, Armando? Bill? Big guy?
Yeah, wastewater. We are moving in.
Into the new utilities offices. We started moving in on Monday.
Oh, congratulations.
I think they're advancing pretty good out there.
Yeah.
So come on out and visit. Thank you.
Armon?
Thank you for being here.
Councilwoman Hewer?
I just wanted to ask staff, the letter that's going out to the community regarding the water test, can you give us some, just a real quick little update on that? I've gotten some questions about it.
The notice is going to be mailed out, I guess, tomorrow with the, with the flyers. What occurred was back in August, we had a couple of hits on our, on our back tea samples. We do normally about 30 samples every month and goes on for years. You know, we're just doing it. We had a couple of hits, so we had to go out and, and do some additional monitoring, which we didn't find any, you know, everything came up clean. And we couldn't find out what was going on with the system, but the state does require us to notify everybody. It's after the, after the, you know, everything happened, after they reviewed everything and they came up towards the end of September and said, yeah, we, we still have to do a notification.
So there are no health concerns?
No, there is, not at all.
Make sure that's really clear, there are no health concerns.
Very clear, yeah. It's, when we went out and we sampled again immediately after we found out, it was, everything was clean. It just, it, it could have been something that the lab did, it could have been something that our operator did, but there was nothing in the system that we could identify at all.
Thank you. Thank you. Nothing else. Going back to Mayor Cruz, do you have anything to add tonight? Are you still there?
Are you talking, I hear a lot of background noise, I heard something about Mayor Cruz.
That's you. Do you have anything, any comments?
Uh, no, just looking forward to my three, you know, crimes coming down here tomorrow. We have a morning meeting with the Sacramento Division that I'll be attending on behalf of the city. So it's, I believe we're supposed to be meeting at 3:45 as, as a get together to figure out what we're going to be doing. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes.
Steve?
I think he said yes.
Okay, I see you did.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing him no longer, I'm going to assume he says nothing else. Councilwoman Powers?
I'd like to save my comments for last, if you don't mind.
All right. Councilman Campion?
I have no comments.
You're going to be last after me or?
Last after you, please.
Okay. The only thing that I would say, I want to say thank you to the volunteers from River, Real Life Church, who came out and built our last four raised garden beds and they've already been claimed by people that were waiting to have their own garden. Well, thank you to them for coming out and doing that for us. Also, I'm, I'm apologizing for our IT problems and hoping that these were the last IT problems for our next meeting. Maybe we could test it or something. Okay, with that, I'll go back to Councilwoman.
You too, Laurie.
Well, I just want to say, and I, I hope you let me finish this before anybody jumps in on me, but I feel totally disrespected tonight by the city attorney and by my fellow council members. I asked what people could say when they came up to the podium. We were given clear direction and we let someone come up and bash me for counsel, for a campaign that happened two years ago based on lies, half truths, misinformation, and hearsay. And the hearsay especially affects me because it's a word that we used a lot in a closed session meeting a while back. And it, it said, you know, you just can't really go by what other people say. But tonight, that gentleman said that, someone said that they overheard me saying something at a, at a, the Heritage meeting that involved another candidate of ours. I am tired of politicizing up here on the dais. It's not a place where someone should come up and vote for or say bad things about someone that's running, you know, by saying what he said. We know whose side he's on. You know, he's on a side that always tries to do that kind of stuff. And, you know, if anybody would have started saying something about any one of you up here, I would have stopped him. And I just think that, you know, we tell him what he can, what he can talk about and then he gets up and starts blabbing about something I did two years ago, which is totally false and not true. You know, so I'm very, I'm very upset with everybody here tonight. And if you think I was pissy tonight about what happened, just wait till somebody else tries it again. And I mean it.
Well, let me say, I accept the responsibility of conducting this meeting and you have my sincere apologies for what you went through. If there is no other comments, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at nine.